Thank you, everyone. I call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided. I think I muted myself there at the end. So, thank you, everybody, for coming. We're going to begin tonight with public input. And for public input, if anybody has any comments or thoughts about something that is not on the agenda, please either raise your hand or type a comment. Hearing none, we're going to move on to our student report, and then we will get to the Hood School right afterwards. So, the student report, I believe we have Gianna Navulo here today, and Gianna, are you here?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Buckley.
Yes, we'd love to hear from you.
Yes, let me put my agenda here. Hi, everyone, I'm Gianna Nallybo. I'm a junior. And some, I'll talk on some notable academic matters first. The end of Term One is tomorrow, so report cards will be uploaded on the Plus Portal e-Locker. So, course selection is also coming up for juniors, and then that will proceed through the other grades. As the term is coming to a close, the Civil Action Project, which is the new version of the community service requirements, the juniors and seniors should have completed 12 to 18 hours of service by tomorrow. Guidance is hosting a post-secondary planning night for parents and guardians of the class of 2022 on February 11. Registration for both the SAT and ACT are open. SAT on April 13 and ACT on February 6. And National Honor Society is offering virtual tutoring to juniors and below. And then some fine arts matters. Notorious submitted into Any Voices and won two awards, Best Perk and Best Rainbow Arrangement, which is for their video award, and they're working on their national spot currently. And then the production of Everybody is Also Rehearsing. Notable athletic matters. Girls' and boys' hockey both played Newburyport last night. Girls won a 5-1 record for the girls and 3-3 for boys. Registration for the wedge season, I think it's called, is also opened, and there will be updates on that soon. Terms of just general North Reading High School. The results of the preliminary round of DECA came back, and eight out of 27 members of North Reading High School are moving on to the state level. Jack Don, Hugh, myself, Rebecca Curry, Kyle Rabbit, and Casey O'Connor. Other competitions, Harvard Model UN has their conference coming up, I think it was today or tomorrow. And ECO Team is hosting a month-long eco-friendly challenge, which I am participating in, highly encourage. And StuCo has a roundtable tonight at 7:00 for the statewide council, and they are also working on the Book of Excellence. And real quick, for my student work portion, I'm going to present my screen really quickly. All right. Can you see that?
Not yet, no.
All right.
Dr. Daly, do you have to give her permission to present?
I'm trying to see if I can pin it up here for you.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know I had to ask permission. My bad.
I know you should be able to. It's just a matter of, is it letting you?
It says that it's shared. If you guys can't see it, it's okay.
You want to unshare and try one more time? We might have the Chris lock on still.
I know that, I know that Ms. Anthony was sharing. I think she stopped though.
Dr. Daly, I did stop, so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Anthony.
No worries. Yay. I should be sharing now, I think.
It said presenting, but we only see a purple dot right now.
Yeah, maybe you just click on the screen that you want to present on your computer. We're seeing like a purple circle.
No.
It's okay if it doesn't happen.
All right. It's okay.
How are things going overall for the year? And like, my only question is like, if I remember junior year, it's a lot of thinking about colleges. And are you able to do tours still now that you're, with everything going on, or are they all just virtual tours now?
They're all virtual. I know that some colleges let people on, but I don't think many. And then Guidance is hosting a few things lately, so that's been pretty helpful.
Were you looking to stay close, or were you looking to try to go somewhere further away? If you're going to college.
I have no preference on location. More at the school, I guess. Thank you for asking.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much. You are welcome to stay if you'd like to hear the Hood School, but, you know, we also know it's a school night, so no obligation if you want to sign off as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to skip, we're going to skip past continuing, continued business right now and go to new business, because we have a bunch of guests here today. I believe we have Dr. McKay here on the meet, and he's going to be the Master of Ceremonies for us. Dr. McKay or Dr. Daly? We're off to fantastic start so far.
Hello, everyone. I took this, I have hit you. We have a lot of little guests here today, but I do want to recognize that the people that you see together are all family members, and everybody else is socially distant inside the space. So, but we felt that it was important that we had some of our Hood School students come and showcase some of the things that we're doing on. So, thank you for this opportunity. So, welcome to our annual Hood School Committee meeting. We're super excited to be here. Even though it's virtual, we're good with that. We have just had a great year. We're 82 days in. I just got the official count from one of the kindergarten teachers who's joining me, so that's a correct number. And we've continued to have success and be very reflective in our practice. So, tonight, I'm going to be joined by some amazing Hood School friends. They also here, some of them with their siblings. Their parents are all in the parking lot, I think, watching this on a livestream in different cars. I'm also joined by one of our full-day kindergarten teachers, Mrs. Lightleg, she's right here. I just want to say thank you to her for setting up and helping me along the way. And I also have Mrs. Anthony online, helping out, so she's going to run the presentation. So, thank you, Mrs. Anthony. And I also want to say thank you to all the other Hood School teachers that participated. You'll see some videos of them in here, and then you'll understand why we did the videos. Tonight, we will review our Kindness Initiative and our World Kindness Day activities. We will announce the creation and dedication of our Hood School Kindness Rock Garden. And lastly, we'll have our Grade Five teachers share some of their new traditions that they have, that we've established since COVID-related activities. And then we will move on to, the Hood School Chorus will sing us away, but they'll do it virtually. So, kind of the same agenda as usual, just changed up a little bit, and we're looking forward to it. So, with that being said, I'd just like to go on to the next slide. We continue to have our theme here at the Hood School. Hand in hand, together we can. We believe that working together, we can get through anything. So, we have our Parents Association that does so much for us. We have our school climate groups. We have school committee and all the other groups that we're members of. So, we just want to say thank you to everybody who helps us, particularly this year. We needed some morale boosts along the way, and our Parents Association has stepped in and done little things for us to make us happy. So, we appreciate that, and we've always worked to be together here for each other this year. So, it's super important this year that we have each other to get through the times. Mrs. Anthony, next slide. So, I'm going to introduce Mrs. Lightleg again, and she's going to talk a little bit about our Kindness Initiative.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. I wanted to talk to you about the Kindness Initiative today. So, our school climate group devised a plan that each month this school year, we're going to focus by a whole-school meeting, where we continue a conversation about the desirable qualities that we want the members of our school to possess and display as a whole. So, this started from the desire to touch upon the social, emotional well-being of our community itself. In a world where it's ever-changing, day to day, it's just crazy, we are trying to, you know, stay focused as a staff, as a school community, on fostering our actions and our reactions to set the tone for positive experiences. We are trying to start positive conversations here at school that can continue within your homes, giving you guys something to talk about at home as well, and something for us, a learning opportunity for all of us to participate in. This opens a door for us to model and praise all of the desirable things that our students do all year long. And we really think that especially this year, everyone deserves to feel good, appreciated, valued, and included in their school community.
Thank you. So, now I'm going to invite Charlotte Pearson-Bray Linnup.
For each month at the Hood School, you will have a whole-school hangout wherever you create a story related to a targeted event.
Teacher or special guest reads a story with a focus topic to the students. This month, Mrs. Slaven, Miss Slaven wrote an attitude for Brad.
So, to talk about World Kindness Day, I'm going to invite Avery Parker and Mason.
Kindness is defined as the quality of being friendly, generous, and considerate. World Kindness Day is dedicated, voting the importance of being kind to others, yourself, and the world.
World Kindness Day, November 13, 2020. Purpose of this day is to help everyone here to understand what binds us all together. We add a lot of fun at school, worrying about kindness, talking about power, and helping others.
Kindness is described as everyday, positive, caring, and thoughtful.
Awesome, thank you. Mrs. Anthony, can you advance to the slide, please? I'm going to invite Bray Linnup to introduce the Kindness Quote Project.
Student cheered quotes focusing on kindness as a means to inspire all of us to be kinder each day.
Now, I'm going to invite Scarlett, Kenji, and Ty to share some quotes.
In a world where we can be anything we become.
The art of kindness will not have taught.
He needs to be taught.
Now, I'm going to invite Paxton, Abby, and Emily. Thank you. I want everyone to know that the sprinkle it everywhere idea was mine. I'm going to invite Kelsey up. No, I'm sorry, I'm going to invite Emily, Tegan, and Timmy Quinn up to talk about the Kindness Initiative going forward.
By exploring these virtues, we'll make the Hood community strong. Hand in hand, together we can.
Thank you. So, you know, we really wanted to make sure that we focused on being kind to one another. Sometimes it's easy to lose sight when in school and how we perform academically, and we spent so much time doing that. Particularly in these times, we really just wanted to focus on, you know, we're here, we're safe, and we just really want to be kind and positive with everyone. So, we'll be moving forward with that Kindness Project. We have some great ideas planned. With that being said, I'd like to invite Kelsey Quinn up to talk, to introduce the fifth-grade team and some of the things they've been doing. Thank you. So, Mrs. Anthony, can you advance that slide and roll the tape?
Hello, Hood School community. I'm Mr. Quinn, and I'm pleased to announce today that we are creating a Kindness Rock Garden here at the Hood School. I am so happy to know that daily reminder of the importance that kindness plays at our school.
Hi, everyone, I'm Michelle Caffernan, a fifth-grade teacher at the Hood. When the concept for our Kindness Rock Garden was brought up, I immediately thought of one woman who embodies the meaning of kindness. This wonderful woman truly goes out of her way to get to know everyone and will do anything she has to to make their lives a little brighter. I am honored to be the one announcing that the JT Hood Kindness Rock Garden is dedicated in honor of the one and the only Linda Welch.
Hi, Mrs. String here, Hood School Administrative Assistant. We're all wearing blue today in honor of Mrs. Welch. There will never be another Mrs. Welch at the Hood School. She is number one in our hearts.
Hi, I'm Barbara Papa Giorgio from the Hood School, John O'Parra. My good friend Linda Welch has always been dedicated to her students in all of her jobs around the front office, like welcoming parents and making everything look beautiful around the holidays, including the she shed. Mrs. Welch was not only dedicated to her duties here at the Hood School, but she has been the most dedicated wife, mother, and gammy that I know. I am blessed to call Lindlin my best friend for over 20 years, and I can only hope that my level of dedication to my job at the Hood School is commensurate with her years of dedication in every aspect of her life. We love and miss you, Mrs. Welch.
So, thank you, everyone. That's really special to us. If you didn't know, Mrs. Welch was a Hood School paraprofessional. She had previously worked in the cafeteria, but back in the day, she gave away all the food to the children, so they had to move it to the paraprofessional role to save the budget. But, you know, we, over the time when we went from March to June, we got together as a family too, and we painted some rocks with some kind words on them. This is actually the one that I did. I commissioned this one, I didn't do it, but this was the one I submitted. And basically with some sort of be kind theme on it or kindness quotes and all that. So, we have many of them out there. When we started talking about the dedication of the Rock Garden, it just seemed so fitting to dedicate that garden to Mrs. Welch. So, I can see that she's crying, and I won't put her on the spot, but, you know, I just wanted to reflect that she gave so much to the Hood School community, and we wanted to recognize that. We couldn't think of a better way. So, thank you, everyone, for participating. Mrs. Welch, you deserve it. Oh, I'd be shocked if you didn't.
Oh, well, I can't even talk again, which is unusual, as you all know. I had no idea that was happening. I can't thank you all enough. It's quite a shock and an honor. I appreciate you all, I miss you all, I love you all. And thank you so much.
Mrs. Welch, all the kids want to give you a little wave from here, so. Just another thing.
Be good, kids. Thank you. Can I come, please? Will I be able to?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Welch.
Will I be able to see the Rock Garden at some point?
You can come anytime. Just make, just make an appointment.
I will, I will do that. Thank you. Thank you all.
It's covered with snow today, so we're going to have to wait a couple of weeks.
I'll wait a little bit.
It's beautiful, though.
Thank you all so much. I can't get over this. Thank you. Even Pete Diddy's here.
Congratulations, Mrs. Welch.
Thank you, Pete. It's a pleasure to see you. I love to be here.
Thank you.
It's very good-looking on you. You look like a little stud.
Thank you.
Love you, Linda. Love you, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations, Lindlin.
Jackie, Matt, and Jim and Colleen say congratulations.
Congratulations, Mom. Hi, Cal, thank you. Thank you. Where are you people? I don't even, my house isn't that big. Where are you people talking from? Oh, there you are.
Congratulations, honey.
Oh, my God. Hi, Cam.
Hi.
Jeepus creepus, thank you all so much. Hi, Colleen. Hi, buddy. Say congratulations, she didn't hear you. Congratulations. Thanks, buddy. I'll see you soon. Let me get the other one. Matt, say congratulations, Kim.
Congratulations, Cam.
No, buddy, I'll see you soon. Thank you, guys, so much. Thank you, thank you. See you all soon. Thank you.
Hello.
I'm Mr. Quinn. Hello, Hood.
All right. So, this year, we did have to change up many of the activities that we do. So, many of you know that each year, one of our amazing traditions is our Hood School Thanksgiving Feast that we all enjoy. It's a real, you know, when you talk about traditions and things like that, we felt strongly that this tradition was something that we wanted to keep. Unfortunately, we couldn't. Over the years, we've managed to, you know, keep that tradition alive, but with what was going on, we couldn't. So, if you go back to one slide, Mrs. Anthony, one of the great things that our Parents Association sponsored is if you look at the slide, they sponsored the turkeys. So, we did like a group paint. The fifth graders that were in school were socially-distanced, painting an activity with their friends that were in remote. And, you know, just that shared activity and that shared moment in time. But one of the other things that we had to deal with was that we also used Thanksgiving for more of giving activity. So, how did we adapt that? So, we're going to share a video from our fifth-grade team explaining how we put the thanks back in Thanksgiving. And, you know, we made some pretty nice donations.
Good evening, school committee members and guests. I am Joyce Lorton, a co-teacher for the fifth grade. It is my pleasure to share with you about our Thanksgiving project. Keeping with our school climate, we focused on kindness to the Lazarus House in Lawrence. The Lazarus House is a mission in Lawrence, Massachusetts, and they provide food, clothing, and housing for individuals and families in the greater Lawrence area. They serve these people with dignity and respect. They serve the poor, the underserved, and the homeless. Last year, the fifth grade had the privilege of making blessing bags for Lazarus House. These contain small items that the students brought in. Students also had the pleasure of creating a personal card to go in each bag. Well, of course, 2020 would be a different year, and the fifth grade still wanted to show their kindness. The students and their families gave most generously of the three most requested items, pasta, tomato sauce, and vegetables. Shortly before Thanksgiving, Mr. Quinn, a fifth-grade teacher here, delivered the food to Lazarus House. And Marcy, the coordinator of volunteers, wanted to come on and thank the students for their generosity. We had a Google Meet a few days before Thanksgiving, and Marcy shared how grateful everyone was to receive our donation. It was our privilege to extend a hand of kindness to the Lazarus House, and we are looking forward to 2021. Good evening, school.
Dr. McKay, you're muted.
I'm still practicing that, so thank you.
I'm guessing the air quotes were for us.
Yep. We're just trying to keep everything as normal as possible, as routines as possible, as we can for our students. So, that was one of those activities that we had to keep it, but make it a little bit different. So, I'm happy with the success that we had around that. And with that theme, we just wanted to continue what we always do is to showcase our Hood School Chorus. It's a little different right now, and we're working on a few changes that Dr. Daly was, I'm sure, speak of at some point. But this is what we have now. So, our Hood School Chorus has been getting together virtually. So, they put together two different songs for us that we're going to share before we end the evening.
Got some.
So a special thank you to Ms. Camo and all the students that are currently in the hood school chorus that presented. I, I really enjoyed that. You could really get to see some of them really getting into it. And I also noted that Mrs. Heffernan was, I announced hear that song all day tomorrow. So if anybody doesn't know, Mrs. Heffernan is the one at the hood school who sings every song around the building all the time. And she does have a good voice. I'll give her credit on that. Uh, Mrs. Anthony, could you, oh, sorry, Mrs. Heffernan, did you have something to say?
But at least I muted myself, Dr. McKay.
You, you were dancing. I was impressed.
I would like to say thank you to our parents association when we have everyone here for helping out with the fifth grade this year. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, they, they've done a lot behind the scenes for us and it's tough to, you know, they come in and they kind of do things silently for us, which is super nice. Um, and we appreciate it. So just in closing, I, I, the message that we wanted to send here from the hood school is that like during these times, we're just gonna continue to focus on kindness. So in a world where you can be anything, we want you to be kind and we really want our students to do that. And I just want to thank all of them for coming out tonight. Um, and all the teachers and staff members that you see online and, and to our hood school students and their parents for coming and joining us tonight for this. So thank you.
Excellent. Excellent, Dr. McKay. I don't know if anybody has any comments, but I just wanted to say thank you so much. I know it's been a challenging year, but you know, students, you guys are doing great. Parents, you know, and the teachers and the administrators. I mean, Dr. McKay, it's just so nice to see the leadership that, you know, that's happening. And we can't thank you enough. So many, it's a challenging year, but really they're still learning going on and people are making the best of it. So thank you guys.
For any of us, our students or any of the staff?
Anybody have any comments, questions?
Ms. Embriano, a former hood school alum, with Gianna Nolivo, who was the student speaker tonight. So it's all hood tonight.
Yes. Oh, it was awesome to see that. It was, it was so cute just watching the interaction of the family members, a little girl dancing in the background of one of them. I just cracked me up. Um, it's lovely to see the hood school. I haven't been there in ages, it seems like. So, and I recognized one of the students, um, from the parish that we go to. And I just wanted to say hi and that that was lovely and very creative. So well done.
We, we happen to have Charlotte with us. She's the one who was really dancing. Yeah, she, her and Mrs. Heffernan were next level with that.
Well done, Charlotte.
Chris?
Uh, I just wanted to echo Ms. Embriano. You guys did a fantastic job. I'm a hood school alum myself and I thought my guys did us all proud. Great job.
All right. Well, with that being said, thank you everyone again for everything you're doing for us. We appreciate it. Our students appreciate it. Our staff appreciates it. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Bye, everyone.
Thanks, hood school.
Okay. Now to follow that, why don't we go back to continued business and we will call on Pete Diddy to lead us through the reopening update.
So everyone learned my nickname, huh? That was pretty great. Oh, that's so funny. It's quite an honor. What a presentation. I was just so excited to see, um, you know, just another example of, like he said, making it, making it work as well as it can work. And, you know, still seeing the kids singing and doing some, um, some of their, you know, their, their, their best work, even though it's just looking a little different this year, they were able to continue. So I thought that was great. So I, I did want to share some updates tonight about the, uh, what's going on in, in, um, with COVID and reopening. And I start with some good news. It's my understanding that the town, uh, the numbers are starting to come down. We moved into the yellow. That was, uh, shared earlier this evening. So I think that's great. I think the message that we're gonna be continuing to say to everyone is we don't want to see any kind of a Super Bowl relapse or bump back. So we're gonna be, be making sure we share with everyone again that we're still seeing the majority of this spread in people's homes, small groups, um, small gatherings. So really make, make wise decisions. And if you are inside with, with anyone not in your household, in a car or anywhere else, we should be wearing masks and keeping that distance because we're, we're, we're close in school, but we're six feet apart and we have masks on and we're, we're still learning and we want to keep doing that. So when we're home, um, sit on opposite ends of the couch and I think we'll, we'll be in good shape because it's working well in the schools. Um, so we did discuss at last meeting a little bit about athletics and sports. And something that came out of our athletic subcommittee meeting, and then we were able to, um, continue was the suggestion that the last events for the, for this, uh, winter season, if we, if we were to push some of the competitions closer to the break, um, we might be able to, we, we felt that the, the situation was different enough, um, to possibly allow some spectators in because if, if it's the February break, we don't have, uh, teachers and students coming in the next day. You know, we've got a, a large separation there. We feel that it's a very different scenario because it's not about, uh, parents or anyone coming into the building during the school, uh, year. It's about, you know, coming in at the break and we would have time to clean and time to separate. So we believe that, uh, Mr. Johnson and, and, and Mr. LaPret have worked very hard on a very safe and organized, uh, plan that we think would go forward that would allow parents either at the school or at some of the outside venues to have, um, at least one opportunity to see their children live. And so we're trying to get that, certainly the parents of seniors, maybe some, some others as well. And we're hoping that this is sort of a all's well that ends well. I think everyone was very cooperative and understanding, but as the numbers are coming down and as we have this opportunity, we're hoping to do that. So I don't know if there's any comments or thoughts on that, but that, that is what the administration would hope to be able to do.
Anybody have any thoughts on that? My, my only question to you, Dr. Daly, while we're on the subject of athletics is, has the video been, been any better? I know that they were having challenges, but has the video stream been better?
Yes, we, you know, Mr. LaPret, Mr. Johnson, Dr. Downs, our tech team, Nicholas Langford, everyone has been working on that. We believe that we, we remedied that, um, pretty early in that, in that week. I guess it was going back maybe two weeks now. Um, and it's worked flawlessly since then. Quite honestly, we've had some other internet issues during the day. Uh, Verizon was having issues. I mean, there was all sorts of things and it hasn't, to my knowledge, affected the stream, um, at, for the afternoon game. So I think that has been, um, working well. So that's, you know, we did receive some correspondence from parents asking us to look into it and the reports back were that it was working great and I haven't heard anything other than that since. So that's good news.
I may, I, I applaud trying to find a solution where it works for people. And I guess if students aren't in session, if, if things are happening over the break, I guess that is a little bit different than, you know, a Thursday night game where everybody comes in on Friday morning. So I appreciate you working with the parents and Dr. and, and, um, uh, Mr. Johnson on that. Rich?
Yeah, you know, you guys know I'm one of the more, I tend to be really conservative about, about this. Um, so, you know, but that being said, I, you know, you guys, we, we, I trust you guys to, to make sound judgments. So, um, I, I know you'll be careful and, and not let too many people in. So, um, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, it's gonna be very careful and it's gonna be very well orchestrated with one ways entrances, you know, people are not gonna cross paths or be anywhere near each other. So I think we've got a, a pretty safe plan and, and, and so thank you.
Okay. Do you want to sort of move on to the new business, which is still COVID related and?
Just, just a couple of, of, of other little updates that I just wanted to say, you know, we are, you know, we are watching our numbers. We've had some, uh, increases. We're still at a place that's certainly better than it was in December. We do have 34, uh, students at this time and, and six employees. And there are some others that are impacted obviously by the, the quarantine and the close contacts, but we've, um, we've certainly addressed that there. And I, I just wanted to provide an update as well. I received an email today from a parent. You know, our elementary principals and our elementary specialists have been working hard to come up with a way to deliver more, um, live synchronous instruction and to make more connections with those students who are fully remote. Um, that was a challenge that we, we worked on this year with our schedule. And, um, one of the parents who'd reached out several times did communicate that, uh, they really appreciate our efforts and that, you know, the, the changes we've made have been significant and, and have impacted, you know, her daughter in, in a positive way. So I thought that that was a, you know, a good, um, a good message to receive. It was something we wanted to do from the outset, but we had to work through a lot of, um, different, different, uh, challenges, but we were able to do that. We've been doing that now, you know, solidly for about a month, I would say. And so that's, that's good feedback that we've received there as well. Okay. So do we want to move into the testing, uh, Mr. Buckley? Is that?
Well, I think the next one was the elementary performing arts was next on the list. If you want to go to that.
So sure. So elementary performing arts, I just wanted to share a couple of, um, thoughts with you here. And, and where we are at this moment is essentially, I think we are taking into, um, into account some of the changes that we're, we're going to see in the, in the coming weeks. I think I'm anticipating some updates and changes from the current guidance from the Department of Education. So that's what's, I'm sharing right now. It, it does say at this time that for chorus, singing and musical theater, these activities are not permitted indoors. And as you know, we did, um, discuss this. We think that that guidance has not been updated since October. And when we met in December, we decided that, you know, it was very, very cold outside and we wanted these activities to happen at the secondary level. And so the committee decided and approved that these could, um, happen indoors at the secondary level when safe. For the elementary level, we still haven't made those changes. And so I wanted to discuss tonight about, uh, the thought about what that would look like for it to come indoors. I've also met with the administration and there's some discussion around what the logistics would be because, uh, there's just less space than there is at the, at the secondary. In the secondary, we have, you know, all of Main Street. We have two cafeterias. We have the gymnasium. We have the auxiliary gym. So there's a lot of spaces to manipulate. So with the elementary, it's a little more challenging. So we don't have a plan, like, you know, I wasn't sure at the time when I put this on the agenda, whether we'd be saying, you know, this is something that would start next week. We're not ready to say that yet. And with the anticipation of, uh, some, some new guidance coming up from the department, I think what we're going to do next is the next step. The elementary principals are going to do a survey to try to ascertain how many, um, folks would, would join into chorus. This would really be an extracurricular after school activity as opposed to a school day class, um, where the singing would happen. So that, that's another difference between elementary and secondary. So tonight, this is more of an update that we're gonna do a survey at the elementary level, gauge the interest and then figure out what the logistics are. We also are gonna get more information from the state, um, probably very soon about, um, some, some anticipated changes that may allow for some of these, uh, events to happen safely indoors. And we would obviously follow all of that guidance. If we get to another meeting, uh, and, and they still haven't released that and we don't have that information, then at that time I may be asking for us to consider, um, sort of going above and beyond and making a local decision, uh, beyond what the state has permitted. But I, I have some assurances, I believe, from, from the commissioner that it will be included in, in forthcoming updates. Um, that, that this has been brought forth as sort of a, an equity issue that, you know, why are we playing basketball at a close distance with masks or we're not able to sing? Um, you know, I, I would imagine that there's probably some science to support both being equally, um, challenging. And so I think that we are gonna see some updates from the state. So any questions about that? At this time, it's really just an update.
I, I think my only comment would be, I, I, I think one thing that's great about North Reading is we have a, a robust, um, you know, music and performing arts, you know, group, groups here in North Reading. And a lot of that does start at the elementary level. You know, I mean, I, I mean, I've been to a number of the elementary concerts and elementary, um, you know, even, even the theater shows. And it's just sad to think that, you know, like I know my son was, my oldest son was very proud of being Little Mermaid, you know? And like this year would have been the year that my fourth grader would have been able to do that. And, you know, if, if we can do that, I think this is really where a lot of that excitement starts before you get into middle school. And so I do think that it is really important to try to offer these if we can safely. And obviously, safety is paramount and is the first concern, but if there is a safe way to do it, I do, I, I do encourage us to try to pursue it if we can because a lot of the interest begins at this level. Like I know my, 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 uh, son and my middle son is also, not only can he not do the performing arts this year, but it would have been the first year of band for him, you know? And so no, no students are learning band for the first time in fourth grade. And so, you know, it is something where if we can bring it back, I really encourage us to try to find something.
Yep. And I, I, I will just say that we certainly have interest from doing it. We just want to make sure we do it safely. I think we will see that starting. And there, there is certainly, um, you know, Ms. Kane and Ms. Lister have shared with us at the subcommittee meeting, there are definitely plans. I, I, I guess I don't want to spoil any ideas that are out there because they may not be out there yet, but there are some definitely some very creative ways to do things this spring, even if we can't come inside, where we can utilize outdoors. And, and they're fantastic ideas and, and, um, we would fully support those.
All right. Mr. McGowan?
Yeah, that's, that's a great point that, that, you know, they do have some great ideas. And I'm almost excited to see them if they come to fruition outdoors to see what that would look like, even if, even if we are able to do some inside. But, um, the other thing I was just gonna say was, um, uh, I mean, if, if. But the other thing I was just gonna say was, I mean, if the 82 days or whatever it was that Dr. McKay mentioned is true, then we're not even quite halfway through the year, right? We're at 170 days this year. Is that what we're at? So the good news is there's time to have a lot of, you know, once we're able to put these programs back in place with the safety protocols, there's time to give some good opportunities to kids to sing and to do these activities, so.
That's great. I'll just say in general that I think we're gonna be hearing more and more of a push as we start seeing more folks get vaccinated and more talk about full in person and return. You know, we do need to still have updated guidance around busing to make sure that if we were in full in person, we could get all the students back. We need updated guidance on the safe distancing, the three foot between students or I guess less than six feet being some alignment between CDC, DPH and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And, you know, a few other considerations as well. And I'm optimistic that we're gonna be hearing more positives and working more towards that, but it can't happen overnight. We have to approach this slowly. But things are looking good for, you know, hopefully reopening in the fall and maybe even sooner. So that's what we're gonna keep our fingers crossed for, keep working for.
Rich?
Yeah, and I was just gonna say on top of that, just to remind people, I mean, there is no vaccine for children at this point, right? So, you know, even if all the staff is vaccinated, and we certainly hope that happens, you know, sooner rather than later, you know, the social distancing and all that is still gonna be a part of it for the rest of the year, I would assume.
Okay. Want to talk about testing now, Dr. Daly?
Sure. So my, you may have seen, I've shared out that we are going to do a parent forum on Tuesday, a staff forum as well, and then a parent forum on Tuesday to speak about the two different types of testing. And so I'm gonna speak very briefly right now with an update about the symptomatic testing and then to speak a little bit about the asymptomatic and where we are. It's, there's a lot of information to share, but I want to provide an update on our exploration. So symptomatic testing is ready to, it's in place right now. We, the nurses are trained, the kids are received. We are a full operational laboratory at four of our, all four campuses, which is five schools. Our staff have received the consent forms. The consent forms are all sent out via email and it's a very simple process. You click on the email, you read through, you provide your consent. The emails are coming from Project Beacon. So some may already have an account. If you've used Project Beacon to sign up for testing offsite at the Square One Mall or somewhere, that's what you would use to sign up for those tests. Many schools, either this afternoon or this morning, I'm sorry, tomorrow morning, will be sending this out to all families as well. And so for those that don't want to consent, they just simply don't need to complete the forms. And if that student or staff member were to come to the office, they would just be treated as they would right now, which is you would need to go, be dismissed and go home and then get a PCR test within a certain number of days. The positive of this, no pun intended, if you are symptomatic and you do consent, you would then take the Binax Now test. If you test positive on that test, you would be able to isolate immediately. You no longer even need a follow-up test. The test now has been, they've increased it to a 98.6% specificity, I believe. And that has allowed, there's not even a need for a follow-up test with a positive. You can immediately isolate, we can immediately contact trace. So that will be very, very good for our schools. We don't see a huge number of symptomatic cases as it is, so we don't expect a huge increase in that, but it is a welcome addition to our resources. Then I'm gonna shift over to the pool testing. We've continued to explore this. I'm just gonna explain this a little bit more and what that would look like. There are six weeks of pool testing that would be available. They are specific six weeks. It's not a random six weeks. It would be starting on February 8th, the week before vacation. The vacation week would not be included and then it would be five weeks after the vacation. So if we started late, if we started after vacation, which is, you know, everything's possible, there would be five weeks available to us for free and not six. So it's a defined term of the six weeks. So what we're exploring now is, you know, we've done the homework, the paperwork. We've met, we've reviewed the webinars. There's another webinar tomorrow. We're sort of learning so much as it's going and there's a lot to consider in order to get it up for after the six weeks. Financially, as we look at, there is a large cost to doing this if we were to pay for it on our own. And so my recommendation would be that, you know, if we explore this and we explore it for the six weeks without any real understanding that we would be continuing this for the remainder of the year, we feel that it would be cost prohibitive to continue it for the remainder of the year. That said, we do think it does serve a purpose. And right now, the main purpose of this is to lessen the anxiety, that the percentages at the districts that are doing this, and some of them are much larger than ours and which much, much many, I'm sorry, many more cases where the town is in the red with much higher numbers than we are. And you're seeing that they're getting less than 1% coming back in these pools. So again, the pool testing, we would put together groups of five or 10 staff, students. The entire pool is tested at one time, which makes the cost affordable. We would not be able to afford to give everyone frequent tests, but by doing it through the pool method, if the whole pool comes back negative, everyone was tested in that pool and they move on. If the pool comes back positive, we then need to give a follow-up test, which is called a reflex test. That test then would be, we would then have to retest all those in the pool to determine who the true positive was. None of those cases in the first round of that pool get reported. So it's not gonna artificially inflate the numbers or anything like that. The second test, the follow-up test, would be reported if you were positive. And from there, we would then be able to quarantine and make the isolation recommendations for the positive individual. We would be able to use the Binax test, which again is a 15-minute test with a turnaround time on those follow-up tests. So we feel like we have a good system in place. It would require quite a amount of logistical planning to figure out who are in the pools, how to do the pools, how we're gonna do this. We would have to figure out how to move and ship and either have, you know, there would be possibly some costs to send those samples in every week and certainly a cost of the resources of our school nurses who are, as you know, doing so much work all, you know, they have a full-time job anyway. And then this year, they're also doing contact tracing. They're also making a lot of calls. They're doing a lot of additional work. So this, you know, they're not doing the symptomatic testing. So to add on top of that, this pool testing would be an ask. But at this time, the latest that we've received, I work with the head nurse, she and I watched the presentation together, we feel that it is possible at this point to continue to explore it. So that's where we are. I don't know if there's any questions. So what I guess I'm saying is continued permission to explore this. We don't have a meeting again before February 8th, but the idea is that we may look to see if we can start at one school on February 8th. But there are some, you know, I did bring it to the administration, there are obviously just some concerns around the resources. We do not want to stretch our nurses especially too thin. The teachers' union is certainly in support of this, but, you know, also do not want to see our resources stretched too thin as well. So what we're hoping is, if you look at the vaccination timelines for the adults, as Mr. McGowan mentioned, we're hoping that as this six-week window concludes towards the end of March, we will be much closer to having a fully vaccinated staff with the adults. And that should coincide with a lot of anxiety that should be in a better place at that time. So at the end of the free period, we could do this to sort of bridge that gap between those two points in time. So I welcome any thoughts or questions and I will be putting together some more information to share with parents and staff on Tuesday. After that, I would do a brief survey just to gauge interest because if I feel that a large, large number of families, let's say, are not going to consent, then we have to question whether it's worth all the investment in the resources and the same if staff aren't interested. But any questions or thoughts at this time?
I'll ask one quick question, which is, and I think I don't know the answer to this, but there's no way that any health insurance would cover any of the cost of this beyond that period of time? Like even if somebody tested positive, would the health insurance of the student or the staff member ever be able to be billed directly for the cost?
I do not believe so, no.
Rich, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I missed this in the stuff you put in the packet, but what is the cost, what kind of, just in a high level, what is the cost that is, would be going forward if we pass the six weeks?
So my estimate, if we were to continue this through the end of the year, it's approximately $50 per pool. So the size of the pool is varied, right? One way to calculate, the most conservative or I guess the, one way to calculate is, you know, 10 people per pool, $5 per person, right? And if you do out the math over the two months, I came to about between $150 to $200,000 for two months. And so I think it's, you know, it's clear there, they have said at the Department of Ed level that, you know, there is SRT2 funding that's available that could be used to support this. That would be for our district, that would be just about all of the money we have and it would be all used in two months, whereas that money can actually be used through September of 2023. And we could use that strategically for a lot of other things we've advocated for, including a lot of the positions, including school nurse, that we see as essential moving forward. So to have it as something that is a possibility through the end of the year, I think that's something we're keeping in mind, but I don't feel comfortable advocating that we should continue it for the rest of the year just based on those extreme costs. And, you know, I think the idea that it is something that's free, it works well, I think we should try it if that's where we get to. And then, you know, I think we would think about if we had to continue it for a short period of time, we would try to find a way to do so, but it would have an extreme cost that I think it's important for us to all be aware of.
Okay. Thank you very much. There's no other questions? You can move on to policies. And Dr. Daly, you had nothing else on COVID, correct?
I just wanted to share that we did update the original, and I have it in here. The reopening plan has been updated periodically as guidance has changed. And so there was a side letter to, not really an official side letter, but there were a few documents that, along with our memorandum of understanding with the union, the teachers' union, and this, I think I went past it here, but this was the schedule for the year, the daily schedule. And then also, we had a document about reopening protocols. And so I shared out with you and I just wanted to discuss for a moment, all of these things that we're discussing have been updated and there's been some changes since July. So again, you know, I just notated in yellow here some of these changes. I did share this out with the NREA as well, that, you know, it's not just the red map because this document refers to what we would do if we were in the red for a certain number of weeks. And I think that it's important to recognize that that was crafted in July around a map and a color coding of red that doesn't exist right now. The new map and the new definition of what is red now also includes that important information about the transmission in school. So along with that, there were other changes since that time. For example, you know, there's less of a time, we now can quarantine for seven, 10 or 14 days. Other language changes also include the addition of testing now as it's become available. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone and what's highlighted in yellow are those updates and changes, including the actual language from the Department of Ed that specifies about the transmission in schools. And so I just think it's important for us to note that and for others to note that what was agreed to in July was based on the most readily available science and data and information at the time. And this has continued to progress to include a lot of advances as things have gotten better. And as I shared earlier, the good news tonight is that the town has moved into the yellow. So we need to keep up all that good work that we're doing to make those numbers heading in the right direction.
Thank you very much. Now the exciting part of the meeting, policy readings. Mrs. Embriana, would you like to lead us in this again?
Sure. I think Chris had his hand raised. I don't know if he needs to ask a question first.
Chris?
I misclicked. I'm sorry for being a failure.
All right. I'd like to move to approve the second reading of policy GCH and to keep the track changes as delineated in the document.
I second.
Okay. Any comments, any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Passes five zero.
Perfect. I'd like to move to approve the second reading of policy GAE and to keep the track changes as delineated in the document. Sorry, I went out of order.
I second.
Any discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, we will move to a vote. Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Five zero passes. Thank you.
And for the last one, I'd like to move to approve the second reading of policy KN and to keep the track changes as delineated in the document.
I second.
Any discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Passes five zero. Thank you very much. Since Janine is unmuted, we'll go right to minutes and let you handle those as well.
Perfect. I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of January 14th, 2021, as written.
I'll second.
Okay. Anybody notice anything? Any discussion?
Can't see anything.
Okay. I actually read them. No, I didn't see anything either. Okay, we'll go to a vote. Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve the open session minutes of January 14th, 2021, as written.
I'll second.
Any comments here? Okay. Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Passes five zero. Thank you very much, everyone. And we'll move on. Now, I know that there's a chance that Mrs. Botwell might have to drop off early. I wonder if we should just do the acceptance of the donations right now very quickly before we go to everything else, just because that would be the last one that we would have to have a vote on tonight, I believe?
Sure. There's just one anyway.
Yes. Mr. McGowan, would you mind handling that for us?
I'd be happy to. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude an in-kind donation of disinfectant wipe containers. Boy, those are valuable. Valued at $250 from Ross Mortgage Company, Inc., to be distributed as needed at the North Reading Public Schools.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you very much for the donation and we'll do a vote on this one. Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Passes five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, now we go back to Mr. Connolly for the update on, actually wait, one more quick thing before we go here. This isn't on here. We'll put it on a future agenda item, but the, Dr. Daly and I had somebody reach out about, we appointed Mrs. Botwell to the, I forget what it was called, the town, the facilities master plan.
Yep.
The facilities master plan group. Now, the challenge on this is it was, everything was paused for a little while. The idea was this was gonna be about a year and then it was gonna be done. They're meeting with architects to look at things like the firehouse, a potential new firehouse, potential new community center. Well, it's starting up again now. Potential new community center. Well, it's starting up again now, and they're going to be having meetings with the architect. And the challenge with this is Mrs. Botwell is up for reelection in a few months. Uh, we have noticed that Mr. McGowan has pulled papers, but we haven't seen um, another one pull papers quite yet. And so the concern would just be if for any reason Mrs. Botwell wasn't there to serve. A lot of the work is going to be done in the next couple of months, having these meetings, and then they didn't really want the school member to. You know, to to potentially change in the middle of this. So they made a request to see if we would consider appointing somebody else. It's not on the agenda, so we can't vote on it tonight. But I I don't know if people would be interested. I mean, I'd be. Happy to do it if we need to. I don't know. Frankly, I don't think the school has much of a. Voice that's needed here, because it's mainly looking at the firehouse and the and the community center. I don't think. I don't think the facilities plan is going to give us any any new schools, because I think where our schools are building are in pretty good shape compared to other ones. But we will be talking about it and voting on it, I guess, at the next meeting. And I'm just curious, I I don't know what the time schedule is, but I just told them that we would. You know, see if anybody was interested in doing that. Um. Again, I don't I don't know what people's thoughts are. Um, I mean, I. Yeah, I'd be hap- I'd be happy doing it if people. If other people don't want to do it, but I don't know what other people's thoughts are.
I mean, I, uh, you know, I I mean, I'd be be interested in it. Um. Just thinking if I've got too much going on, but uh, you know, we can, we can talk about it offline, too.
Yeah.
That's why. I mean, uh.
Yeah, you know, I can talk about it. Yeah, I mean, I think. The idea is just to make sure they have somebody that can go. Forward, and I guess potentially you could also be voted out in in a few.
Uh, fair enough.
In a couple of months as well.
At at this point, I may be, at this point, I may be uh, uh, winning two seats on the school committee and two seats on the uh, on the. On the select board, so you know, who knows?
Um, okay.
My understanding is that it's a, it technically will be a select board appointment, I believe, and so we'll we'll have the name. We'll put it on our agenda at the next meeting and kind of solidify that and give them the name, and then they would officially. Make the appointment is my understanding of how it will go, but um, I think that that's fine. I think it's good to begin the discussion tonight.
Okay, just just to put on the radar before, in in case it's about, we'll have to take. Take off early, um, you know, just pointing that out, and so, okay. Thank you, Rich. Uh, Mr. Connolly, you want to lead us to the to the budget update here?
Yes, thank you. Um, so this evening, we don't have sort of the traditional budget update, um, but I did want to provide two quick. Uh, updates that would ultimately have a an impact on the budget. Um, I think most of the committee is aware that we, this is sort of a a bid year for our big bus, regular and athletic extracurricular transportation. So just a quick update really on where where we're at in this process. So we um, had a bid out that was advertised. Over the course of the the month of January, that bid was due at eleven A M. today. Um, so we actually had uh, two companies uh, issue a bid. Our current contractor, North Reading Transportation. Um, as well as North Suburban Transportation. So we we didn't get two bids from from the looks of the. The public bid opening. It's a highly competitive um. You know, process with with two very competitive bids. So at this point, I think we really have to spend, um, there's a small committee that's gonna. Be um, reviewing the the bid packets and and checking references and looking at everything. Um, so that will be a little bit of a process. We're going to meet on Monday. And um, we'll be making sure we kind of. Do the due diligence and follow through with with reviewing those bids carefully before. We would kind of recommend an an award. Um, but. We anticipate at the uh, the next meeting in in February, we would. Um, be prepared, the administration to make an official. Recommendation for an award of that contract. Um, you know, this, this, you know, we also have the um, the option to if. If for every reason we felt, you know, both bids are unacceptable or both kind of too high and wanted to test the market again. Uh, we have time to do that because we did start the process early, so if if um. That is an option that's still available to us. I'm not saying we're going to do that, but we'll we'll certainly be be looking things over. Um, pretty, pretty carefully at this point, but we're right on right on schedule, and it was good to see that. Um, we at least got two bids, because sometimes that's not the case. You you only have have one bid to work with, so. Um, any questions on that before I I'll move on to the next, the next item? Okay. Very good. All right, uh, so I just, I did want to provide an update, because I know it's certainly a school committee goal, budget goal. And it's been certainly something we've been working towards over the la- at least for the the last eighteen months or so. Um, we are continuing to pursue. Uh, if there is a viable solar array project that would make sense for the North Reading School, so. We did. You know, test the market last year and go out to bid and and um, you know, we thought we had a home run, as you as you might say, it didn't happen, you know, the things, things kind of. Uh, didn't work out when we got to contract administration. That does happen from time to time, but. Um, we have kind of taken the approach where we've sort of partnered with R M L D. Um, we've had a cou- couple, two or three meetings really since September. To kind of let them know what would be, what our interests are, what would be available space that we would be open towards. What are some of the real estate? Either on school roofs or in the area that we would be, you know, willing to to work with a potential. Solar firm, so they they have also in the four communities they serve as well, not only North Reading, you know, Reading, Wilmington, Lynnfield. They have kind of tested the market and done a initial R F I. Um, you know, that they moved a little bit slower than than originally thought. We thought that. The results that R F I might be available October, November, but I guess that came in a little bit later, and they're. They've been analyzing that and. Um, they are due to present the the results of that to to myself um, in February. Now, we have a meeting scheduled on. I believe it got scheduled on Thursday, February eleventh, so I'll I'll get kind of the first sense of. What some of these potential firms in the area, you know, thought of. Um. You know, a solar project and. Uh, at that point, I think the the idea is we'll see if there's a, if there's interest and there's a viable project that's both. Advantages for R M L D and. And North Reading in terms of um, either yielding additional revenue in a in a real estate. Um, you know, lease um, situation or by potentially. Uh, you know, looking to to use that energy, so. We will um, we will. Kind of have that discussion, and then at that time, if there's if there's interest in moving forward. We would look to finalize an R F P and and submit that kind of early March. Um. You know, timeframe, which will be back on the timeframe we were kind of a year ago, where I think the bid was issued in March. Um, so that that's kind of where we're at. Um, you know, I I. You know, I'm hopeful that we can, we can work something out. I I don't, you know, there there is a possibility. There's just, there's just not a a solar project out there that makes sense for us. Um, but I'm, I would, I'm I'm hopeful, and we would certainly love, love to pursue it. Um, if if there is a, if there is a project, so. You know, I I think we've kind of learned, I think it it does make sense to kind of. Work with R M L D on this, just because as a reminder, you know, we are in a closed franchise, meaning. Any solar developing firm that comes in. That would look to sell that energy, it really needs to be sold back to R M L D, so R M L D really needs to be. A party that's involved in this. Um. And we kind of went out on our own last year, then looked to involve R M L D kind of towards the end. Um, so this year, we're doing it a little bit differently. Um. But you know, I think we've learned a lot. You know, we've tested the market in solar a couple of different times. Over the last six years or so, and um. You know, at one point, R M R M L D did come six, seven years ago and and present options to us, which were not advantageous at the time. We went out last year and kind of saw what what was out there and. Um, you know, and now we'll we'll try to, we'll try to do it again, so. You know, I I think what we've learned is if we're looking for. Kind of that quick revenue. Um, contract where we're we're leasing space and. Uh, not using the energy, but you know, collecting in those revenue payments, if we want to. You get to a point where we think is acceptable to take on the risk of having a company use our space. Um. You know, it's probably going to need to involve more than the high school, middle school roof to get to a point where we want to. Where we're interested in moving forward. So I I think that we we certainly answered that. Um, last year, so I think there's there's more spaces that we could potentially look at that will be part of this potentially. And um, we'll kind of see, see where, see what's out there. You know, there's there's just. You know, there's just limitations that we have as a municipality, working within. A closed franchise with a municipal light plant. Um, and there's just. You know, there's limitations that exist with us that maybe does not exist with that private homeowner. Um, that can kind of do things more on on their own, so I'm not not saying there's not an options out there that can work. Um. The incentives that were once there with solar a decade ago. Uh, or you know, seven, eight years ago are not there anymore, tax incentives and so forth that were once there that the state was offering. Um, are not there to the same degree, so is the market has shifted. Um. But not to say that 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 does not mean there's a project out there that makes sense for us. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. My 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 only question would be, you you sort of touched on it about some of the state tax. Incentives being gone, but. I wonder if there was a project, if there was. If if it would make any sense to speak to some of our local representatives to see if there's any way in which. You know, the state, our state reps could help us with. With this project in any way. I I don't I don't know exactly what the limitations are or what the previous. Options were, but you know, I think we've been very. Lucky to have some very active and supportive uh, state representatives here in North Reading. And so I wonder if when we get this project, if we, or we we get some of the proposals. If it's worth having a sit down and a discussion with some of the state reps to see if there is anything. That could be done, because I mean, the idea here would be to both, you know, save energy and and. You know, not waste, you know, fossil fuels, but at the same time. To potentially find a way to help, you know, a public school, and so I don't I don't know. I don't know if it's worth. Doing that, but I mean, I'd be happy to, you know, reach out and start that conversation if. If there's something there that could be beneficial. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I I think I would say, yeah, I mean, certainly it's it's worth a try, and I would agree, they've been very. Uh, beneficial when we've kind of gone to them and and they've been great advocates and lobbied for some. Um, on behalf of North Reading, certainly, you know, State Representative, you know, Brad Jones has been instrumental with some airmark grants that have helped with technology and security initiatives and school security initiatives, so. Yeah, I think we can sort of certainly um, reach out to them, and certainly, from my perspective, it's not gonna, not gonna hurt. And what I would love to do is kind of hear R M L D out on. The eleventh and see what they present and see what. Their their message is, and then. If we really feel like there's something that is there and it's just, you know, a little bit more incentives or breaks from the state. With um, incentivizing solar for for a school district like ourselves could help, then we, let's, I say, let's, let's do it, but let's all for it.
Excellent. Mr. McGowan?
And the other question I had, uh, um, Mr. Connolly was, you mentioned, um, you know. It would probably involve any, any viable plan would probably involve. Um. Uh, more than just the middle high school building. Um. Would it possible, be possible that that we would need to? Seek out space on some of the municipal property as well, or have you talked to the municipal side about sort of? Doing this, you know. Doing combined of the.
Yeah.
Usage and stuff?
Yeah, great question. So we we did, I have. So Michael Gilberto was um, involved in the. The conversations with me and R M L D in in kind of late summer. Early fall, and um, he did indicate that there was some space in the town, town hall. And other space that they would be interested in, so that is supposed to also be a part. Of this this study and this, I guess, request for information right now. Correct.
Are we sure that won't collapse a town hall roof?
I I know.
I was thinking the same thing. When I talk to a solar company, they're like, you you have, you you don't want to do this on an old roof, because it's.
I know, so.
Um, we do have a new roof at the little school, too.
A little is new, right? I know they've talked about the hood, but the hood, I think the hood is. You know, is is older, and I think it would. Would need in need for some type of refurbished within the life of this of a solar, in my opinion, right now, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Connolly. Interested to hear. What comes of that?
Yep.
Okay. Um, is that the? Rest of the budget update?
That was it. Right, correct.
Thank you. I see nothing for staffing. Is that correct, Dr. Daley?
None at this time.
Subcommittee updates, athletics subcommittee. It's not me and Mr. McGowan, it's somebody else.
Yes.
Janine and Rich?
That would be.
Go ahead, Janine. You're muted now. You're still muted, Janine.
Sorry, I just realized that. Um, yeah, it's it's Diane and myself, and I was not actually able to attend, so I will defer to Diane.
Yeah, so we um. We talked about, we reviewed the budget. Um. We talked a little bit about what Patrick had spoken about earlier, which was related to. Um, you know, trying to do something for the seniors. Um, around the February vacation time, but ultimately it looks like we might be able to do even more than that, which was great. Um. We reviewed the user fees, which was down a little bit, but expected. Um. Talked about some of the the signups for um, the different sports. Um, we also quickly spoke about, it comes up from time to time, thinking about eighth grade waivers. And whether or not we ever want to go down that pathway as a district. There's many schools in the Cape Ann League, I believe, that do that. So we just talked about that briefly as well, but no real decision or or pondering on it further. Um. Other than that, um, I'm trying to see my notes. I don't think there's anything else. Or that we talked about the quote for the turf field as well, um, and I think the. We want to make sure when we do submit something here that we kind of go for. Um, I think when the turf field was first put in, it was more of a higher end product, and we want to make sure we do that. Um, and do it right, so. I think it's uh, not a huge installation. It was about a five week installation um, for when we do move forward with that. And we talked a little bit about the costs and the warranty. And that's all I had. Patrick, did I miss anything?
We talked a little bit about the wedge season. We talked a little bit about eighth grade um, interest in eighth graders playing, and that that would be a longer term uh, exploration.
Yeah.
Um, but certainly the uh, I think you hit on all the major points. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I wonder, I mean, just commenting on that, I wonder if. As our district gets a little bit smaller for the next few years, if they're having challenging, challenges filling all the uh. Teams at the varsity and J V levels, but. I guess I'll leave that to athletics. Um, fine arts subcommittee. This is Chris and Rich.
Yep, we um. We talked a bit about what um, Dr. Daley brought up today, earlier with elementary schools. Uh, finding paths towards towards uh, lower restrictions, but um, in addition to that, it was it was good to hear. Continuing uh, the theme from fine arts, how well they've been able to find new opportunities for things and find the silver linings. Um, despite all the difficulties. One thing that stuck out with me was that. Uh, the band does a lot of practicing in the halls, so that kind of creates this. This fun feel throughout the school, if people are going in between classes and kind of get a chance to uh, hear the live music.
Yeah, I think the other thing that I liked, uh, uh, the discussion we had that I thought was really interesting was. How, and I think we may have talked about this a little bit, but um. How in the in the art classes, they're working to uh, get student work online for sharing within the class. And you know, this this meeting followed right right on the heels of of the of the presentation from the high school in our last school committee meeting. Uh, which featured um, so so many great uh, art students and. Um, you know, we talked about. Going forward in in the long run, not just for the rest of COVID, of this COVID time. Of of facilitating a way to to showcase student artwork. You know, online as opposed to just in a building, so that uh, people in the town could possibly be able to appreciate it without actually. For those who never have any other reason to go into any of the buildings, so. Um, they they they're all doing some great work, so.
Excellent. Janine, your hand's not up, is it? No, no. No, okay, and then we had a budget update, a budget subcommittee meeting right before, before tonight and. I think Mike and, uh, uh, Patrick just started outlining the preliminary parts of the budget. And then I think, I think we, we updated on finance planning last time where it seemed like a little bit more realistic, um, initial revenues, which is good. So I don't think we'll see the, the incredibly huge deficits that we usually see the very first draft of it, um. It'll be a little bit more realistic, but I think there's still some more work to be done, um, I think they're trying to highlight there's. Yeah, I think, I think a lot of what's uncertain right now is what next year looks like, um, with COVID, like, are, like, there's some positions that were added that. If we're back full time, kind of what it was before, maybe they're not needed, but if it's not that, maybe they are needed and, you know, trying to prioritize everything, but. A- across the board, I think the idea is the town, revenues are going to be tight next year and, you know, I think. Overall, town committees are being asked to keep things really sort of level services and. So I think, uh, Michael and Patrick did a good job of initially presenting some things, I do think it might be worthwhile to schedule another budget subcommittee. Dr. Daley and Michael, just because I don't think we gathered everything today, um, but. No, more comments on that, Patrick?
No, I think that's great, I mean, I think, you know, what we're doing, Mr. Connolly's done a great job, our administrative council has been meeting where, you know, some folks have asked, are we still on schedule for what we typically do? And we, we are, we're, we're following the procedure, Michael does such a great job of leading us through that. It looks a little different and some of what we're sharing is going to talk about, you know, some of these expenses related to COVID that. Some will carry over into next year in different ways, whether it's hopefully not for the same needs, but certainly for sort of reopening, right? Some of those adjustments coming back, um, will be reflected in this as well, but, um, we're, we're right on schedule, um, as usual, so thank you, Michael. And we can certainly.
And the, the one thing that I also thought, like, we talked about the busing contract and, and the budget subcommittee, this kind of came up as well, where. I think we might need to talk soon about school schedules, about timing of things, because. As kindergarten's starting, I had a parent reach out to me this week and ask about. You know, they have, they have somebody going in and they're just trying to figure out their own personal schedule, like what the start times will be, things like that. I think that will, you know, go into the bus schedules a little bit and so. I'd be interested to see when we're going to release the academic calendar and we're going to have that discussion, um, I mean, I know that I. I don't know, I don't know if it's worth surveying people to see how it went, but I don't know what other people have heard, but I've heard, I don't think I've heard anything but positives, I mean, even. And I talked to a lot of elementary parents, they've been, I haven't really heard anything negative from them and I've heard a lot of positive from middle and high school parents.
Sure, I was going to share a little bit in the administrative report, I'll just do it now, so we, we are talking as an administrative team, the po- the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive from the secondary, the science certainly supports. Uh, sort of the latest start time, but we're, we're trying to look at several things, there's three things coming together, the bus contract. The, the teachers' negotiations this year, which was our largest union. And of course, you know, is there a silver lining to some of what we did this year, so we were able to, in some ways, sort of pilot what it, what it, what a reverse start time would look like. And we're going to continue to explore other opportunities, is there something we can do with the, you know, the, the staggered elementary times to try to see if that is something we can look at? We're going to look at the, the later start times for secondary, um, and maybe there's some other possibilities within the schedule, things that. Uh, were positives of this year that we might be able to carry forward, so we don't want this just to be a decision that wasn't discussed. We did have a committee that met for well, well over a year and that group is going to come back together very soon to look at start times, we're going to do some. Uh, s- some information with parents and with the community about the benefits of all of this, as well as including, so what you will likely see though, as we bring forward a calendar. Will be a recommended, uh, schedule that's not set in stone, but it will have, um. It will look more similar to this year as far as the, the changes in the time, and we understand that there's some inconveniences, no matter what we do. But we have to look at what, um, scientifically is helping our students the most and what the feedback is, so. We're not just making that decision blindly, we're going to discuss it, we're going to present it, but, uh, we are going to share that out, so I, thank you, I was going to share that tonight as an update as well.
Thank you, and just to finish up, subcommittee, then we'll go to the full admin, admin report is. Finance planning team has a meeting on February fifth at eight AM. Athletic subcommittee have a meeting March seventeenth at one PM. Fine Arts Subcommittee has a meeting at three thirty PM on March seventeen. Um, administrative report, Dr. Daley, do you have other things?
Yeah, I, I, I will just say the evaluation subcommittee is also a sort of a late addition, they're going to meet on, um, on the fourth of February, so I'll add that, um, in as well. We've just decided that to prepare for our upcoming meetings. Uh, my, my administrative report tonight was going to be about the start times and so, um, I think we've covered that at this point.
Still your thunder, I apologize.
Well, it's all good.
Correspondence, nothing, I don't think?
None at this time.
Um, so future business, February eighth, we have a meeting at six thirty PM. And March fourth, at six thirty PM, we have the first, it looks like the preliminary budget presentation a- at our meeting, so. If there's no other business, I mean, Janine's still raising her hand, Janine, you have some more comments or? And I, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oops, I'll make the motion. To adjourn.
I'll second. Nope, Chris seconds.
I second.
Okay, we'll, uh, do a vote, Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, thank you, everybody.
Good night, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.